Good evening, the time is six o'clock. We do have a quorum here. Ms. Odom, please have the record show that Mr. Holland and Ms. Schweitzer are the ones that are not able to be here this evening. Dr. Shepherd, certification given in accordance with provision section 551.002?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is invocation. Ms. Stout, can you? Everyone stand and Ms. Stout leave us in a word of prayer.
Father, we thank you for today. Father, we ask that you anoint and bless our school year as it's coming. Father, we thank you for our senior staff, teachers, family. Father, we ask you for a successful school year in Jesus' name. We'll give you your last page here.
Please join us for our pledges in one second. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you, you may be seated.
Next on the agenda is items requiring board action. We have, A, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Move to it first.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Langley. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That's five, four, zero against, motion passes. Next item is consider and approve the 2022 delegate assembly delegate and alternate to serve as the district's representative. Mr. Holland said he was willing to sacrifice himself again. I promise.
I nominate Mr. Holland.
We have a nomination, do we have a second for that? I need, I need an alternate.
We need the delegate and an alternate.
Right, I need, I need.
I nominate Mr. Holland and Ms. Kathy as alternate.
There, there you go. Kathy, if you're watching, you just got nominated.
Who made the second?
Who seconded?
Me.
So have a second, have a, a motion and a second, so everybody in favor, please raise your right hand. There we go. Motion passes. Welcome to the club. Next section is report informational items. The first two, the grading guidelines report and the bond project update are written reports in your agenda packet. The next thing is the annual state program reports, and the first one is dyslexia annual report by Ms. Williams. You changed. Ms. Williams, you changed.
I have.
I got, I got a tan.
Good evening, Mr. President, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Shepherd. Just want to just kind of preempt our two presentations on this evening, it's going to be some informative information. Just kind of highlighting Ms. Sarah Williams, she works with not only dyslexia but also RTI and 504, she's been doing a phenomenal job with that, and along with Ms. Comich, who works for our, she's director of special education, and it's kind of a symbiotic relationship as relates to their work. Although they're presenting separate reports, those, the things that you'll hear kind of go hand in hand, and the kind of relationship that they have in terms of working with our kiddos, but anyway, we're making strides in these areas, I'm super proud of both of them.
Thank you, Mr. Forney. Good evening, Dr. Shepherd and board members. So tonight I'll be giving you information in regards to our dyslexia program from this last school year, goals that we've completed, and then goals that we are continuing to work on in the upcoming school year. So the overall dyslexia program vision that we have is to identify students as early as possible through our early childhood dyslexia screening and identification. We talk very, very much in detail with our leadership that the earlier that we can identify students in the realm of dyslexia, the earlier they can get services, the more likely they are to exit our dyslexia program, back into regular classes, and not need as much support as they would in their later years. So just as Mr. Forney said, through working with our special education department in a combined effort, it's our continued goal to identify those students that are at risk for dyslexia, so that we can make sure that they go through the proper testing, instruction, and are provided the accommodations to assist them in succeeding in their school setting and beyond. So just some comparison numbers for you to look at from last year and then this year, when you're looking at them in comparison of just where our numbers are increasing. Relatively overall, our brick and mortar campuses have stayed roughly about the same. It almost seems if we have some that leave the district, we have some others that come right back in, so we've stayed nearly about the same, but you can definitely see the increase in our TOPS program and where they have increased just this last year overall.
Do you, do you have an explanation for that? Like are they, are they just, are they testing them more?
With the TOPS, overall, just their whole, I can't speak on 100% of what their enrollment was, but when you look just overall at all of their enrollment, it, it increased for all grade levels.
So that just reflects the increased tolerance.
Exactly. Yeah, so it just correlates with all that increase that we saw overall with TOPS, but I was, I was surprising, I mean, it was still surprising to see that much of an increase, especially when you look at the numbers specifically, if you're looking at Topps Elementary, they had 24 last year and went up to 116. So very important that when we've been in those school improvement for all checkup meetings, talking to them about what they're doing for their dyslexic students, how that's working in comparison to what we're doing for ours, and trying to become more aligned in that So when we look at our dyslexic students, one of the biggest changes that we've had in the state of Texas was our dyslexia handbook being updated across the state this, this year. And the number one thing that was changed was the pathway for identification of students with dyslexia. Before, school committees would have a chance to look at the data and then decide, okay, we think maybe they need to go through the 504 process, or maybe they need to be tested under special education. The state of Texas came out and said every single student, if they are seeking an evaluation for dyslexia, must go through special education. So we talked about the hand in hand with Ms. Comich and us working solely together, that has a lot to do with that. As a district, we actually started doing it before the state even came in and said, thou shalt, and you have to do all identifications this way. We knew it was coming, so we wanted to be proactive the last couple of years and start funneling a lot of our evaluations in that direction. It gives more of a comprehensive view of, of the students' needs and that type of testing evaluation that shows all of those areas. With 504, we might have only been looking at just one specific piece. So we've seen a lot more referrals go through special education, but it doesn't always mean that they're still going to be served through special education. And so this was just a comparison for you along, it goes along the same with the TOPS students, we've seen an increase in those 504 students, more so directly related from the TOPS increase overall. So just some trainings, I'm not going to read this bullet by bullet, but want to highlight some very specific things, like right now, our teachers just got, and staff got all of their trainings, part of that is some dyslexia, dysgraphia, also some 504 training that they're required to do. That's all through the computer modules, but we are very specific in going to campuses, campus-specific trainings for teachers and their needs for dyslexia, working with our interventionist. During January, we're assessing our first grade students for dyslexia screening, and in May, looking at our kindergarten students for those that are at risk for dyslexia. So that's where we've really been able to take that data and start to look at students in the early, early grades that might be, might be showing signs of dyslexia. Looking at phonemic and phonological awareness activities for our students, and I'll talk more about this in just a second, and then I just updated you with the information as far as our dyslexia handbook and our new pathway for identifying those students through special education. Part of that too is also making sure that our community is aware, there are child find efforts, and that parents understand the change that the state has also made in how we identify our dyslexic students. So some ongoing training goals that we completed, all of our dyslexia teachers have to attend a five-day training in order to be considered a dyslexia intervention teacher, it meets all the requirements in the dyslexia handbook. Working with our interventionists to make sure they have technology resources for our students that assist them in any way that they need. One of our biggest areas that we focused on this year, our teachers have always progress monitored, use their data to help drive our decisions with our students, but we didn't really have a platform that we were using. Everybody was kind of using different pieces, so they now all have one streamlined platform that's technology-based, that they're able to generate. Data reports, have conversations with 504 and ARD committees and RTI committees, and making the best decisions for those students, as well as providing dyslexia parent resources at every meeting we have for parents. So we talked about the SPED, I mean, the student progress monitoring, so that went really well this year, continuing to collaborate with our SPED assessment staff, making very much informed, data-driven decisions. We really talked at our leadership retreat and our teachers about making sure that the data that we're using is that valid data, and we're not basing our decisions just on feelings, but what are very specific needs of students and driving those discussions. So with our dyslexia screenings, as I said, we screen all kindergarten and first grade students yearly. We really felt this year, talking with Ms. Turner, other instructional coaches, since this has been in place and we've been doing screening, we really felt that this was one of the first years where we were not questioning so much whether a student was at risk or not, solely from the Hegarty Phonemic Awareness Program that we put in place, because we knew all of those kindergarten and first grade students were receiving explicit systematic instruction and phonemic awareness. All of that is the underlying cause of dyslexia. If a student doesn't have the ability to identify sounds and words, manipulate those sounds and words, that could be that underlying cause of dyslexia. So if we can pinpoint that super early, intervene for those students, and then identify that need, we're much more likely to identify those students at an earlier age. So much so, we've implemented it pre-K, so the starting out the school year, we'll have all of that implemented, implemented, pre-K through second grade now, in building those strong phonemic awareness skills with our students. So that's probably been a big, big success. This year was our second year to hold a class, a dyslexia class at our elementary summer school. It's solely based on whether or not we have teachers, because like I said, they have to be trained to provide those dyslexia services. Thankfully, we have a great group of teachers that are always willing. Last year, we invited up to 20 students, we had 12 attend this year, we invited 20 again, but had 17 students, first and second graders. Out of all those that attended, they all showed progress from beginning to end within the four weeks that they were there, and a lot of their focus was on those early phonemic awareness skills and building that early literacy block that they needed. So we hope to continue that, and then even more so, provide that in the secondary setting. So we held a parent information night in May, this was the first year we combined it with Ms. Thomas, and tried to get more input and more increase in attendance with those coming, and we felt it did a great job of that. So we held it with our bilingual ESL and dyslexia programs, gave them lots of information, interactive sessions, answered questions, and like we said, continue to hope to do that in building even more programs within our information night. So just some continued goals, like I said, we'll continue with our dyslexia summer camp, but I know specifically, Mr. Campbell's already asked before about the needs of a secondary class for summer school, so we're looking at that. Looking at implementing our dyslexia advisory meetings at the beginning, middle, and end of the year on each campus, to make sure we're making informed decisions about students that were making progress in our dyslexia program and moving forward. Assisting teachers with technology needs, ongoing training, and making sure that we're not just leaving our dyslexia screening like as a one and done, we're done, but that we're actually using the data as we continue to move forward and making, making those best decisions for those students as well. All of our dyslexia teachers at the moment are all trained, we do have two special ed staff members, one at Stewart and one at Huntsville Intermediate School that will need to be trained this year, but ultimately, all of our teachers, we've worked very hard at making sure that we have both gen ed and special ed staff trained at all of our campus to serve our students. All of our dyslexia teachers were to be returning for the school year, and then campus training ongoing for all of our people at our school, progress monitoring, and then continuing with our parent information nights throughout the school year. That's all I have as far as our dyslexia program, is there any specific questions or any comments or anything from the board? Appreciate your time. Thank you very much. Good evening, President Wharton, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Shepherd, I'm here to give you some information on our special education program for this past year, some of it will extend from the information that Ms. Williams shared, and more into the, to the specialized area of our umbrella. So this is just an overview of our growth over the last five years, you can see that we have definitely been doing our child find duty and assessing and identifying those students in our district who have disabilities and need special education support. Much like Sarah shared on her growth this past year, we were up to a little over 1,600 kiddos this year, about 850 to 900 of those were TOPs students. We typically sat around 350 for them, so they did double to triple the size at TOPS this year. This is our initial and reevaluations, our assessment count. We had 257 initial evaluations conducted this past year. Reevaluations are new evaluations requested within ARD meetings of students who are already identified, so 140 of those totaling close to about 400. It's, that sat right around the same as the previous year, but I will say, previous year we had rollover from COVID, so this year we did have more new initial referrals in the district. So we, we continue to grow in our referral requests, some of that having to do with that dyslexia being moved under our assessment umbrella as well. This is our projected enrollment to start the year, so we, in our brick and mortar buildings, about 850 kiddos for special education. TOPS were down to about 680, so you can see we're dipping there. With the pre-registration kiddos, it'll probably go up some, but I don't, definitely don't anticipate the hike that we saw last August, or at least I hope I don't, we don't see that, that was, that was a, that was a fun ride there. So just a little bit about our continuum of services, so we serve students in the general education classroom, all the way into self-contained and some additional services. We've, we've seen the most, most growth program-wise, definitely in our life skills and our autism-related classrooms. We've had a lot of growth and a lot of great things happening with our parent training and our in-home training, we have identified a lot more of our families and provided those supports to assist our students with generalizing the skills that they're learning in our classrooms and on our campuses into the school, so that they, they can continue their growth at home and with their families and in the community and those type of things. Proportionate share services are services that we provide some of our homeschool and private kiddos, so we do have some students like from classical and Alpha Omega, and then we do have some homeschool students that come and get some speech therapy, they do some dyslexia intervention and things like that, is what we typically provide through the proportionate share. Respite care, we work with Region Six with our families on those applications and providing them some assistance in the home, those are usually our, some of our low incidence disability kiddos, and then we do have one kiddo that is participating in a residential facility This is just a breakdown of the campus staff, special education related across the district. There definitely has been growth over, over the last couple of years, which goes hand in hand with us identifying more kiddos. Like I said, a lot of our special programs is where we're seeing the growth, so that, that does come with some teachers and instructional assistant staff when we're looking at additional staff members on our campus. This is our related service and support staff, so in addition to our, our teachers and our instructional assistants on campus that support our kiddos. Last year, we did, we did some restructure and we added ARD facilitators to our department. That has been extremely helpful for our assessment staff, so their sole role and responsibility is the whole ARD process. So they schedule the ARDs, they send out the invitations, make sure all the appropriate people are in the meeting, facilitate that ARD, and it's really helped with some of the clerical pieces and ensuring accuracy in our paperwork and getting those turned in, and that has allowed our diagnosticians, our LSSPs, to really focus on the testing part, and I'm sure everyone is aware of the, the national shortage of assessments, so it is nice to take that, that ARD facilitation piece off of our assessment staff and let them focus on getting our kiddos assessed within timeline and make sure we're identifying there. A variety of our, our therapy services, we do have a vision specialist that comes in to work with some of our kids. The LID specialist is a new position this year that we did some restructuring and modifying for. Like I said, we have had some increased identification in our intellectually disabled students, our autism students, and so that person is going to be allowed to be on campuses and in classrooms, supporting our teachers and our instructional assistants, and making sure that we have good structure and good curriculum and materials for those students. Some glows from this year, so indicator 11 is our child find indicator, that is a 100% accountability indicator, and we're, we're pushing there, so 2021, we are at 67.1%. That definitely, COVID had a play in that, so that was, you know, a year that we shut down, and then students didn't return, so, but this past year, we were able to, we just did it with summer submission P, so it's not super final with TEA, but 93.3% is what we improved on in our child find and timely meeting our assessments and the timeline that's required by TEA. So I'm really thrilled and I'm very proud of our staff for that, because as you can see, our referrals are very high, and so our assessment staff worked really hard to make sure that our students got tested within those timelines. Quality of intervention plans and student progress with academics and behavior, so some of that support staff you saw on that slide, our behavior coaches in the district, our, our low incidence disability specialists, other, other specialists that help our teachers with paperwork and those kind of things. We've, we've been working really hard the last three years to put good processes and procedures in place. Sarah and I have been partnering on improving our RTI manual and our tiered practices, so absolutely, our behavior intervention plans, our IEPs, our 504 plans, the quality of the interventions within those is getting, is getting a lot better, and so I'm really excited and proud about that. Completion of TEA required support plan, so because of our non-compliance with the child find, Mr. Forney, myself, and a couple other on our team, we worked with TEA for a support plan with that, as well as our significant disproportionality with our out-of-placement consequences for our special education African-American students. So that was a, we don't want a support plan from TEA, but it really was a great process, I felt like, it brought a lot of the right people to the table. We did a whole lot of data digging, a lot of stakeholders were brought in from the community, parent representatives, and so it, it's really pushing us forward and ensuring that we're doing quality behavior interventions on our campus and that we're keeping our kids in the classroom and not ISS and OSS. This one, I'm like, I need a popper for this one, Dr. Shepherd. So zero new TEA complaints filed amongst our brick and mortar campuses. So we did, we did have a couple of kiddos from TOPS that we worked on with legal this year, but as far as in our buildings and our kiddos here in Huntsville, we did not have any TEA complaints or due process requests this year, and that is like, super huge, and at leadership last week, you know, I shared with the principals, that's not just me, that's not just our department, that means our teachers are implementing IEPs the way they should, that means our administrators are communicating and building great relationships with our kids, so that's absolutely definitely something to celebrate. That means less money spent. Students participating in our 18-plus program, they were able to get back onto the community, and so that's always great, because the focus of that program is vocational, we want to have them with jobs before, before they leave us and move on to their post-secondary life, and then this was celebrated several times, but never too much, just the, the creation and the success of our unified basketball team was, was very exciting this year. And then some areas that we're, that we're going to continue to focus on and grow this year, so this top one, I'm very excited about, providing parents opportunities for informational sessions that will increase communication and build knowledge of special ed practices and services. We have planned some lunch and learns and coffee chats that we're going to roll out to our parents that we'll host throughout the year. We're absolutely hoping to increase in-person attendance for that, but we also plan to video those and start building a virtual library for our parents to access, and so I'm really excited to bring our parents in, I think that the more they know, the more they trust, and we can hopefully continue that, that zero TEA complaint there. And so we've had a lot of increased parent participation with the virtual pieces, so one positive thing from COVID was pushing us to, like the Google meets format, we've had way much more participation from parents in our ARD meetings, and so I'm hoping that even if we can't get them into our buildings for the parent sessions, that they will access those virtually. And then I'll just highlight the last one too, so recruiting and retaining professionals in the field of national shortage, so assessment is, is hard to come across right now, just state of Texas as well as the nation. I'll highlight that, you know, our department has been working closely with Mr. Morales and his team. We, we put our, our job requests on every website that we can find, there are specialty websites for speech therapy, diagnosticians, LSSPs, all of those things, so we search and put those there, we push out as much on social media as we can on those specialty pages as well. Also, just through networking, we've also been, we want to focus this year on getting into the colleges, working with professors and directors of, of the College of Education there, because I think a lot of districts are getting into those programs, those senior, those senior classes, and really, they're, they're catching them before they even graduate. So that's something that, that we want to work on and make sure that we're on that train too, so that we can make sure that we're getting quality people here in Huntsville for our kiddos too. And that's all I have, do you guys have any special ed related questions?
I, I have to say, this is, this, sitting here listening to your report, it's been amazing to hear, of course, we already know that we haven't seen the lawyers, they disappeared. Okay, we know that, but it's amazing that we've gone through this year with the success that we've had. And what is the one thing that's made that, because I'm the old one here, and I've seen lawyers, a lot of them have retired because we pay them so much. What, what is the big success this year? What, what is, of course, the right answer would probably be yourself being brought on as the leader, but.
No, no, no.
What, is it your people, what is it?
I would definitely just highlight communication and building trust, and, you know, we go into ARD meetings, and even if a piece of an IP wasn't implemented, or there was an incident that, that a parent was upset about, you know, it's about owning what's going on and promising those parents that, that what needs to happen is going to be done moving forward, doing what needs to happen so that you earn that trust, and, and, and just growing those relationships. So again, like I said, you know, we have a great group of administrators, I don't even get, of course, you have a couple of families. I don't even get, of course, you have a couple of families, you know, that, that the office directly works with, but for the most part, the principals, the A Ps, the counselors, you know, they're doing a great job building those relationships, and if they have questions about a high-needs kiddo or a service that needs to be implemented or, or something that a parent's asking, they reach out to us and we, we do our best to support that. I think having the support staff that we have in our department is very helpful, like our behavior coaches, our, our specialists, because they're able to be on those campuses and in those classrooms and supporting those teachers. And like I said, the quality of our plans and our interventions is a huge piece too, because that's where you're going to see the progress, and that's ultimately what, what makes parents happy and what every parent wants, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
One piece I heard you say, but I took it as you did say, because my phone was strewn off the wall, especially. And is that you're listening to parents? And you're making promises to address them as they try and cover them up? So, thank you very much.
Absolutely. I'm a mama, so I want to
Makes a difference.
These kids are, are just like mine, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Where did Mr. Leahy go? Mr. Leahy, you are next on the agenda. I want to see you skip into the room. I know. Sorry, we didn't see, have it on camera. So this, go ahead, I'll let you introduce your video.
All right, thank you. All right, so good evening, President Wharton, Board of Trustees. It's summertime, so we thought it might be neat to showcase how our students spend their summer. But since we're in Huntsville I S D and we're always building champions here, the name of it is How Champions Spend Their Summer. I want to give a, a special thanks to our student narrator who nailed it, first time ever doing something like this. The video runs about a minute and a half. Thank you.
It's summertime. So like most kids, we Hornets have been relaxing, playing with our friends and spending time with our family. But here on Huntsville I S D, we are building champions, so we wanted to share how champions spend their summer. Here are just some things we have been doing these past few months. Some of us have been learning something new. Some of us are learning how to be better beaters. Competing against each other and with ourselves. Finding out what are we good at and what we like to do. Doing experiments. Waking up early to get in condition. Teaching others what we know. Working together to make something cool. Practicing a lot to get it right. And of course, drinking lots and lots of water. We hope you had a great summer so far. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Awesome. A lot of smiling faces in there, because nobody had a test the next day. Next item on the agenda is Board of Trustees' comments. Would any board member want to make a comment? Okay, moving along, Dr. Shepherd, you're
Mr. Wharton, just for the record, there were no other public comments either.
Oh yeah, sorry, I forgot to ask that. Thank you, Dr. Shepherd.
Thank you, President Wharton and Board and audience. Just a couple of highlights. We kicked off our leadership retreat last Wednesday and Thursday, and our theme, if you will, was under construction. So you'll see that on T-shirts coming up soon, and we talked about what under construction means for us, and obviously, the bond construction projects come to mind immediately because you're seeing some progress in that construction. But it's also about what we're constructing in our kids and our adults and what we're doing in our district all the way around. Mr. Forney and his team from Teaching and Learning, Curriculum and Instruction, really put that together for us, and it was a blast. We had a, two great days of learning and, and had some fun in the process. It was a great way to kind of bring the administrative staff back. We've had a lot of trainings over the summer, of course. We're continuing our expansion of Capturing Kids' Hearts. We brought Huntsville High School on board with that, so we had four sessions over the summer, got a big chunk of the high school staff trained, and Mans Park and H I S, who had kicked it off last year, also had some staff members that picked up that training as well. One of the things that we do here that I'm extremely proud of, and I want to give a shout out to Mr. Morales and the H R team, we've had multiple sessions through the summer of what they call N E O, which is New Employee Orientation. And our H R department put that together and built that over the past couple of years. And as I've told our new employees that I got to stick my head in and say hi to, I don't know of another district that goes that extra mile to make sure that when our new employees come on board, that they get that face-to-face time to learn about benefits, learn about some things about the way the district works, and just make them more comfortable well before they start their job. So we'll definitely have, you know, new teacher orientations going on, starting on Monday, but this is for every new employee, so they get an opportunity to hear, to hear from our benefit providers and make important life decisions as they're coming on board and coming to a new district or starting their, their career for the first time. They do a fantastic job of that, and I appreciate that. It's the first, I guess, face of the district for so many of those folks as they come to town. So staff development kicks off next week. It's hard to believe that August 1st is right around the corner. We're excited about the new year. Like I said, new teacher training starts on Monday and Tuesday. Our annual convocation is Wednesday. We're doing a lot of things differently. We're not going to give it all away, but we do have a guest speaker coming that we're excited to, to hear from. We know it's going to be a great kickoff to the new year, and that's my report.
Thank you, sir. Next item, trustees, will you please check your calendar? We have a regular budget workshop scheduled for August 4th, and then our regular monthly meeting on August 18th.
I'll be out of town on the 18th. Me as well.
And then there were five. So, okay, we will
There were also in, before the board budget workshop, we will have a very short special meeting.
On, on the 4th.
On the 4th. Two meetings in one, okay.
No, still six.
Well, still six. It'll be very short.
Okay. We'll double check, make sure we're going to have enough trustees here for our regular meeting. Okay, thank you. That being said, the time is 6:38, and we will go into closed session. Thank you. The time is 7:35. The H I S D Board of Trustees is now an open session as permitted by law. Does any, any member of the board wish to make a motion of this Level 3 hearing based on the information presented?
I move that the board deny the appeal and uphold the Level 2 decision.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes. Ms. Jordan, we'd like to thank you for bringing to our attention the issues with our signage. And as a board, we are requesting that the district address the signage for all handicap spots in the district to be brought up to code, preferably before school starts, if that's not possible, to continue to work on it. Also to address the signage for loading and unloading times where that negates the handicap spots, and we'd like an item put on the agenda for the next board meeting to bring us up to date on our progress.
Good. Any other discussion? I now call for the question. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. That's 5, 4, 0 against, motion passes. The parties will be promptly advised in writing of this decision, and this concludes the Level 3 hearing as requested by Ms. Jordan. The time is 7:37, and we're going back into closed session?
We are going back into closed session.
No decision.